On record?
Thank you. Good evening, welcome to the City of Lincoln City City Council Meeting for Monday, October 23rd, 2017, at 6:00 PM. If, excuse me, if you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up on the sheet near the entrance door to the council chambers. You'll be called to speak during the public comment section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed in our public hearing and public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Don Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Yes.
Riley Hoagland.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Susan Walke.
Here.
And Kip Ward.
Here.
Thank you. Do you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Before we get going, I've been asked to read, before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to encourage everyone to visit the Imagine Lincoln City website at www/imaginelincolncity.org. Imagine Lincoln City is a community visioning program with one main goal, to create a guiding vision for the way our community looks, feels, and functions over the next 20 years, based on input from the people who live, work, play, and visit here. The ideas we get from the visioning project will help us as we update the city's comprehensive plan. We encourage you to tell us your ideas by visiting the website. Click on the link that says "I have an idea." We look forward to hearing your big ideas for Lincoln City's future. Consent agenda: Oregon Liquor Control Commission, new outlet off-premise sales license, Starfish Manor, Lincoln City LLC, and the regular meeting minutes of October 9th, 2017, 6:00 PM.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing not all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Yep. Motion carries. Comments? Would you care to comment at all, Mr.?
Yeah, I mean, it's off. How many more liquor outlets do we need?
Ultimately, I guess. Thanks. Comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a councilor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. I have Laura Green.
Aye. Where is the light that I'm supposed to look at?
Right there between Mrs. Steer and Mr. Appicello.
Where I can't see it. Okay. Wave at me or something.
Okay, and just give us your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Laura Green, the Juggling Queen. I'm Lincoln City's unofficial town clown, and I am working, I'm bringing before the city council, a proposal to brand Lincoln City. I've been working on this now for quite a while, and I have to ask if the city council received in your box a handout from me. Okay, so we're up to date. In your pack, this, this pack that I just dropped off to you, it was just sort of thoughts and ideas concerning carrying forward with the branding project. One idea that I floated out there that is in this pack, in trying to find what do we have that other towns do not have, it occurred to me that we have Santa. This is an incredibly powerful marketing tool that I think Nell Scott really needs to look at. I've discussed this Santa idea where Santa is actually, he vacations in Lincoln City. I mean, he's got to vacation somewhere, right? So if you're in the North Pole and you're Santa, where are you going to go for the weekend? If you come down the coast from the North Pole, the first beach that you really get to is Lincoln City. Now, I know you'll think about that, and we can talk about Santa further. But in focusing on Nell Scott, one of the things that I've worked on, and I don't have any color copies for you, but I've been working on how to brand, I'm holding up something nice and colorful to tempt you all with, how to start branding our different districts. And the ideas that I've come up with here, we can discuss at a later time, when we get that far. This week, what I'm laying before you is actually pretty serious work. I did watch the BPN presentation. I watched it twice. I took various notes on it. I put, in no particular order in this pack for you, comments that came out of that BPN meeting that you can look over. One thing that stuck out from just recording comments that you guys made, how much the words "we need" were used over and over again. "We need a communications tool." "We need something that says 'I feel proud.'" "We have 13 logos and we need help moving forward." It's very interesting when you start pulling out comments from a meeting and you suddenly go, "Whoa, there it is." One of the things, the comment that came forward that I thought was great, it said, it was talking about logo design, and that's something that we're coming up now here really quickly, that a great logo you should look at, and a great logo stands for an experience that you had. You should see a symbol, and it should bring you a memory right away. A great logo, some, one of you guys said this, a great logo gives you confirmation of an experience that occurred. What can you say, can you conceive in one drawing that says "Lincoln City"? Here's my stamp. So this week, I focused on two things for you. I focused on logos, and I focused on typography. In the BPN presentation, they came up with certain conclusions, and I have written down for you what my conclusion is for our program. That being said, let's take a quick look at type. Oop, I saw something flashing over there. Is it, oh, I still have time. Okay. I propose to you that the typeface that Lincoln City needs is called Futura. Futura is a face that will last you, it's lasted the last 100 years, it will last you the next 100 years when the Cascadia earthquake comes and wipes everything out, Futura typeface will still be with us. It is a beautiful workhorse. It's a Bauhaus face, it was designed in 1923. Composed within the Futura family, you can get every typographical work that you need done. The city needs a typeface that looks like the city and can communicate very clearly. You need a typeface that can read on the side of trucks, on the side and fronts of police cars. You need a typeface that speaks with authority, no fuss, no muss. Futura. That is my recommendation. I ran this by a couple other designers back east, and they all said, "Oh, of course Futura, why would you think of anything else?" Now, what can you combine with Futura? You can combine anything you want. And so if the city is speaking with Futura, perhaps, perhaps Nell Scott doesn't want to speak with Futura, they want to use something a little flaky that might say Santa Claus, you can combine it with Futura. So working within the framework of that particular typeface, I have a yellow caution light, you have everything that you need to do. I'll just say really quickly, because I probably only have 30 seconds left, take a look at your logo. I have finally figured out how I would draft it for you, and there were several sketches that came before it. I leave it with you. That is my conclusion. Thank you very much. I have a meeting with Rich, with Ron on Friday. So we're going to try to take this puppy, and let's move it forward. Thank you for your time.
Standing. Thank you so much for bringing that forward, and thank you for your efforts.
You're welcome.
Much appreciated. We're, we've got a lot of talent in this town.
You should use it.
We're working on it. We're working on it. Oh, good grief, I hit the wrong button. There we go. We're back. Yeah, Kathy, is our district attorney going to be here? No? Our district attorney? We're supposed to be having a presentation?
She has confirmed that she was.
Okay, well, maybe we'll have a chance to squeeze her in before the end of this hopefully short meeting. How about informational techno, information technology services overview? There's a man that can't live without. You know, there's times. It's a lot of, a lot of information to carry around. All right. It's taken us months to get to this.
I am Tony LaSoya.
Welcome.
I am the Director of Information Technology for the city, and I have been for the past two years and eight months. Time has gone by.
So you didn't direct that movie you just saw?
You know, I thought about bringing in a red balloon and saying, "Hey, I made a lot of money, I'm out of here." But, yeah, Director of it, I don't, I thought that was funny when I saw it, but I believe that the council has asked for me to give an overview of what it is we do in information technology at the city. Our small department consists of four employees, myself, David Twig, who is, you see, running around here and is very helpful. He is the support specialist. Bill Wyman, who I could not live without, the systems administrator, and Charlie Boynton, who is filming these meetings, recording them, he's in that little room. And, and without him, the recordings would never happen, and I'm grateful for all of my team. We get a lot of work done with a small group of people. IT supports all departments in the city, from the police department, to public works, to the community center, to planning, to finance. We touch every department, we support all of their applications, we support all of their computing needs. I think we do an amazing job. It's very, varied, and I think most days you don't see us, and that means we're doing everything right. You don't want to see your IT guys. We went from having, when I got here, an incident once or twice a week. We had our first incident in the last two years on Sunday, when the storm that came through caused some power issues for the library. I'm very proud of that, and it's, it's been a team effort. Your support has been amazing, giving me the financial backing I need to get the job done. Ron's been amazing, and my team is great, and I appreciate it. We are acting more and more as a project management office. I am a project manager, and we have taken on some projects that touch the departments both technology-wise and process-wise. We successfully implemented the Agenda and Minutes software that we're now using. We are working on e-permitting, records management. We have the phone system project coming up this year, video surveillance for City Hall, the community center, the library, and now I've been asked to look into video surveillance for our parks due to some vandalism. So I'm having a conversation with our vendor on Tuesday of next week to see what our, the possibilities are for putting some video surveillance in the parks. We're working on the community center integration of that big Jumbotron with the Swim Eat software, and that's been kind of a, kind of a challenge, but Bill has owned it, and I think we're going to get to the end of that, and so there's, there's, other than just providing printing and network services and email, there's a lot more stuff that we've taken on that we do in the IT department. I try to run a very cost-conscious department. The Gartner Group, which is an information technology think tank, says that no more than 4% of the municipal budget should be spent on information technology. Happy to say that, believe that the number we came in last year was at 3.3%. I am always watching costs, I try not to add to the operating budget. I've spent my career working for nonprofits and government, and so I've been, it's ingrained in me to always be a good steward of the taxpayer dollars. I understand where these dollars come from, and I try not to be wasteful. And so we run a very tight ship in our department. We touch every department, and everything we do, if you imagine a day without network services or a day without email, it's a very bad day for the city. And more and more, it has become a vital service. We take security very seriously. I like to say that nothing is not hackable. You can hack anything, you just want to make it as difficult and painful to hack. It's possible that somebody moves on to something else. If you look at Experian, the Macron campaign, WikiLeaks, the CIA, Amazon Web Services, it's all over the place that the organizations are getting hacked. I'd like to say that we take security very seriously here. And if you'd like to see what we're doing, I welcome you to come up to IT and visit. I give you all a tour and an overview of what day-to-day looks like, what we're doing to protect the data of the citizens, to protect the data of the staff, and what we do all day long. And so that is IT at the city, and it's, it's much larger than that. I can go on probably for hours, and you have spent hours listening to other people, you do not want to spend hours listening to me. But if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer them, and, and again, I want to invite you up, come up and say hi to IT, come in anytime, you're always welcome, and we're more than happy to give you an overview and a tour of what our systems look like and what we do every day.
Any questions? Please.
I just wanted to ask you a question and then say something. The question is, aren't you also doing surveillance, surveillance research for other things other than the park like this building?
Oh, yes, yes, I said City Hall, and so.
Yeah, okay, I missed that, thank you.
You guys gratefully, graciously gave us quite a bit of money to work with, and hopefully not to spend all that money, but we are looking at adding security to the library and video to the library, and then upgraded security to this building, the community center, and the parks, and so.
Yeah, because I think I, downstairs in the parking under the building, I think I've seen some drug deals, so I'm, just, it makes me feel uncomfortable when I park down there, so I'm happy to hear that.
During the budget process, I heard that, and I heard that there was concerns about putting cameras down there, or desire to put cameras down there. That'll be part of the discussion I have with our vendor.
Thank you. And my comment is that I have visited IT on several occasions when I've needed help, and you guys are wonderful. I really appreciate you being there.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
And the service.
We only exist to serve, and that's what I tell my guys, is the only reason we have jobs is to, to serve the staff. And so they need to take that, that we're, if we're not providing good service, we're failing. So I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Are you putting surveillance up in the community center? Did I, did I not hear that?
Yes, sir. Yes.
And so that surveillance, I mean, I'm of the opinion that we need to have surveillance on who goes in and out of those shower and restrooms. Is that going to be accomplished, or does anyone else share that?
You're the first person that shared that, but I will certainly make note of that, and, and when I talk to the vendor, ask what our, what the capabilities are of the system. And, I mean, the cameras, once a system's in, the cameras are relatively inexpensive. So if we decide we need more cameras, we can put more cameras in. We have to make sure that we're protecting the privacy of the folks going in and out, but I understand what you're asking for. You want outside going into the showers.
Yeah.
Okay. That shouldn't be a problem at all, and I'll make note of it, and, and we'll put it as part of the quote.
Thank you.
I just, you know, great, so there's cameras in the parks and that, but the intent is to do what? And, and who is going to be monitoring them and enforcing what?
That's a very good question. I'm just providing the infrastructure.
Right, so, okay.
So that, that's a question I would think for the police chief and a question for the city manager. What is the overall goal of what we're trying to accomplish here? I think it's to, I think it's to, my takeaway is that we're trying to prevent folks from doing things like vandalize. And so if somebody sees a camera, they know the camera's active, maybe they'll think twice before doing it. Also, if somebody does vandalize, we might be able to figure out who that was and provide that information to the police department. Is someone going to be watching this stuff 24/7? I don't think so.
Is there a, is there a year-to-date graffiti rehabilit, you know, graffiti repainting fee, cost against the implementation of surveillance cameras?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that.
You know.
But I could find out.
How much damage to how much cost as well?
I can find out.
Tony, thank you for this update and kind of overall picture.
You're the first time I've, I've heard you, but reference, or anyone from IT reference a percentage of cost to the budget. So that was enlightening. I also agree with your observation that the vitalness of the IT in our workplace today. Often, I feel trapped because of it, you know, I mean, we don't, what does the workforce do when electricity goes down? My, my question is still the pursuit of productivity, you know, is through your industry, and I'm not expecting an answer, but there's always that question of, you know, are we really adding to productivity, or where is the savings of advancing with, you know, IT and programs and that kind of stuff? I don't know if your industry has some standards set or, you know, to, to help us reference against. But I'm, I'm always sitting here having to do, I fear, voting for a budget item for more money, and, you know, we hope that we're a paperless society, for example, and yet, you know, I've got lots of paper.
Right, right.
So I'm, I'm not sure we've actually saved money, and, and that's okay, if, if maybe it produces more productivity, we're saving it in personnel or, or something, but I, I would hope that through time that you'd maybe be able to work into your department overview or whatever, of some productivity kind of things to, to help me anyway, understand a little better about, you know, why we're, we pursue this venue other than, it seems we have to, just to keep pace. And, and that may be the answer.
Sure, I can, there's some, there's some good reports, and I'll reference Gartner again, there's some good reports on the Gartner Group website.
Gartner.
G-A-R-T-N-E-R, Gartner. They are, they're a think tank for information technology. So you could almost, you could probably take away, well, maybe they're slanted, but I don't think so. I think they, they're a very balanced and fair organization in their opinions. They do a lot of research on things like your asking productivity gains from IT. I would, I will find some documentation for you rather than have you go out there and search for it yourself. That's a very fair question, and that's, that's something that I've always struggled with, is at what point have you overcomplicated the situation or provided too much technology where maybe now you've shot yourself in the foot with productivity, and it's too difficult for people now because you've added all of these different feature sets? Is it too much? That's a very fair question, and I will get you some, I'll do some research on that and get you some answers.
Thank you. If you can just point me to stuff, is great.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I do. The police office that we're, the police office, I'm sorry, it's been a long night. Police building, as we move forward with construction and the like, will that be handled in-house, the IT?
Yes, the, the wiring is going to be done by a third party, because we're not equipped to pull that kind of wire, but, but putting in the technology will be in-house.
Right.
And so we'll do that ourselves.
And then an odd question, but it comes up every once in a while. Are we involved in drones, or is your department involved with drones at all?
Or not, no. I know the VCB's looking at them.
Lot of surveillance?
It is, and, and if you'd like us to purchase a drone and play with it, we will, but so far that hasn't been asked of us, and if the police department would like to, to look into, or if the city itself would like to look into drones as a surveillance technique, I'd be open to trying it. And I know there's organizations that have successfully implemented such things, so the, the groundwork's been laid, but we haven't been asked to do anything with that yet, no.
You mentioned the swim meets, and an idea occurred to me that since we have the capability of broadcasting these and other meetings through our Channel 4 portal, is that a possibility with swim meets?
It is, yeah. We could, we could get some more cameras, because we, we only have one, and it's an older camera, so we'd have to replace it. But the GoPros are relatively inexpensive. We could put together the ability to broadcast, yes.
I'm not asking for it, I'm just curious if you could.
Yes, we could.
Would that be kind of interesting? As well as other big events we have, I think I'd be, really need to be able to broadcast the, you know, something from the kite festival and something from.
Yeah, we've, and I've been talking to Ed about that, at the VCB, and we certainly can do those kind of things.
And then the last question, you said something about adding security to different things, and is that strictly cameras, or are we talking alarms?
Both, so.
Okay, if your department can handle that, too?
Yes, sir, yes.
Fabulous.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's the end of my questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, and.
And, you know, I want to say too, Tony, I applaud you.
Thank you.
You're like the perfect NFL referee. I'm glad you're there, but I don't want to know you're there.
Right? Thank you. That's, that's what I told, I told the staff when I got here, "You never want to see us." That means we're doing our jobs now.
Especially when you're running down the aisle screaming.
From an IT perspective, though, you're going to get two stories. You're going to get, "We never see you, what are you doing?" Or "We see you all the time, what are you doing?" And so you really can't win, but I appreciate that, that you recognize that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Tony, all right. Scooting on, we're still don't see our DA. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
May I interrupt just a moment? I just noticed that the, the agenda is mislettered, I guess. It goes from E and then blank for presentation, so the presentation should be F, and then ordinances should be G, and I don't know what happened to it, but.
Is there any objection to just going in order here?
I don't care, I just wanted to point it out because it's.
All right, well, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, then, since we don't have our DA appointment, there, we go to the ordinances.
Your Honor, Council, this is the first ordinance, 2017-17. The record is closed, the hearing is closed, and we completed first reading at your prior council meeting. And I'll remind you that on this matter, two councillors made declarations of potential conflicts of interest. Counselor Hinton indicated she owns property in Rhodes End, which may be affected by this, and also Counselor Ward, I'm sorry, made a declaration that because he owns a hotel, he might, he might be impacted by this. On the ordinance, I'll do the second reading here in a moment, but I had a request to correct the findings, and because it's incorporated into the ordinance, I have to read that. So the, the two corrections on the findings would be the last sentence of number paragraph, nature of proceedings, three. The last sentence will now read, "On October 9th, council conducted first reading. On October 23rd, 2017, council conducted second reading and adopted the ordinance," assuming you actually proceed with that tonight. And then on number paragraph two, under the findings, on the top of the, or second paragraph, the second sentence is, "During the hearings, the council heard from officially recognized Rhodes End Improvement Association, comma, the Bellhaven Homeowners Association, and other interest groups." With that correction, which I've now read to the findings in Exhibit A, I'll now do the second reading. Ordinance 2017-17, and ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, Title 17, zoning, adding Chapter 17-17, Single Family Residential Rhodes End R1RE Zone, amending Chapter 17-12, zoning districts established, Section 17-1201O, classification of zones, amending Chapter 17-80, provisions applying to special uses, Section 17-8005O, Vacation Rental Dwelling Use Criteria, amending the comprehensive plan, list of development categories. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance with the changes as read.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
I, just a quick question. So we're recognizing Mr. Oxenholt as having delivered the Bellhaven Association position?
Yes.
Okay. So it actually exists and it's an actual association that the city recognizes?
It's a homeowners' association, not a neighborhood association.
Okay. I know there's been discussion, I kind of got on the tail end of one when I was in planning, that we have to recognize certain associations and.
And we have one recognized association, which is the REIA.
Okay, but not Bellhaven?
Bellhaven is not the same kind of association. It's a homeowners' association, not a.
Okay, it just, it says, "We heard from the officially recognized REIA, the Bellhaven Homeowners Association, and other interest groups." I just wanted to make clear where they are or not.
No, Bellhaven is not one of the officially recognized ones.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Walke.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hoagland.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, Council, the next ordinance is ordinance 2017-18, and because this is a separate ordinance and has attached the same findings, I have to read the sections again. Again, then, under nature of proceedings, the change, correction to the findings is correction to the last sentence, which will now read, "On October 9th, 2017, council conducted first reading. On October 23rd, 2017, council conducted second reading and adopted the ordinance," ordinance, and also the same change as earlier in the section, the findings. During the hearings, the council heard from the officially recognized Rhodes End Improvement Association, comma, the Bellhaven Homeowners Association, and other interest groups. So that's the only change to the ordinance. So I'll do the second reading, ordinance number 2017-18, and ordinance amending the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan map to change designation of 900 lots in the Rhodes End area from Lincoln County SR Suburban Residential to Lincoln City Single Family Residential Rhodes End District, and to amend the zoning map from Lincoln County R1A Residential to Lincoln City Single Family Residential Rhodes End Zone R1RE, and to change the designation of seven lots in the Rhodes End area from Lincoln County SR Suburban Residential and Public Facilities to Lincoln City Park District, and to amend the zoning map from Lincoln County Public Facilities PF and R1A Residential to Lincoln City Park P Zone. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance with the changes as read.
Still moved. Second.
Motion, second, discussion?
Your Honor, counsel, and I'll remind you also, on this matter, we also had declarations of conflict from both Counselor Hinton and Ward. Hinton, that she owned property in the area and that area being rezoned, and Mr. Ward, that he was the owner of a motel.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Williams.
No.
Yes.
Hoagland.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I needed to vote.
Oh.
Yes. Thank you.
Your Honor, counsel, the next ordinance is ordinance number 2017-09, and on this one, you have not previously had a reading, so I will do both first reading, and if it's unanimous, we'll move on to second reading. There are no changes or corrections, I believe, that have to be read. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2017-09, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code to be consistent with the 2015 Transportation System Plan. Amending Title 17 zoning, Chapter 17-08 definitions, amending Chapter 17-16, single-family residential R1 zone, amending Chapter 17-18 vacation rental VR zone, amending Chapter 17-20, multiple-family residential RM zone, amending Chapter 17-24 professional campus PC zone, amending Chapter 17-28 recreation commercial RC zone. I'm sorry, did I miss one? Yeah, amending Chapter 17-24 professional campus PC zone, amending Chapter 17-28 recreation commercial RC zone, amending Chapter 17-32 general commercial GC zone, amending Chapter 17-36 planned industrial PI zone, amending Chapter 17-40 recreation residential RR zone, amending Chapter 17-42 park P zone, amending Chapter 17-44 marine waterway MW zone, amending Chapter 17-45 Taft Village Core TVC zone, and amending Chapter 17-52 supplementary regulations and exceptions. Ask for approval of first reading.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion, second, discussion?
Yes, I have notes that we talked about, an exception to the sidewalk width when there's no adequate right-of-way, is, did that get included?
We did, Deborah and I discussed whether or not it was necessary to make any changes, and given the language provides for if inadequate width is there, then we would ask for the donation of adequate right-of-way, and that is all qualified by a later section, which actually isn't set forth in the amendment, which basically applies the Dolan and Nolan rough proportionality test. So we thought that there was adequate flexibility in the code without having to add an additional provision.
Can I see?
And, Mr. Mayor, again, as, as I read this and the explanation, again, as, as we're a fluid ordinance, as this brings the transportation plan that was approved first, up to date with some of our past changes to ordinances?
Yes, this updates the code consistent with the transportation system plan.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hoagland.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Walke.
Yes.
And Ward.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance 2017-09, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code to be consistent with the 2015 Transportation System Plan. Amending Title 17 zoning, Chapter 17-08 definitions, amending Chapter 17-16, single-family residential R1 zone, amending Chapter 17-18 vacation rental VR zone, amending Chapter 17-20, multiple-family residential RM zone, amending Chapter 17-24 professional campus PC zone, amending Chapter 17-28 recreation commercial RC zone, amending Chapter 17-32 general commercial GC zone, amending Chapter 17-36 planned industrial PI zone, amending Chapter 17-40 recreation residential RR zone, amending Chapter 17-42 park P zone, amending Chapter 17-44 marine waterway MW zone, amending Chapter 17-50, sorry, 45 Taft Village Core TVC zone, and amending Chapter 17-52 supplementary regulations and exceptions. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Move to approve the second reading and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hoagland.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Walke.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
And Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so still no attorney, special order of business, we had nothing, city manager, city attorney reports, interim city manager, anything?
I have nothing.
Thank you, you're welcome. Thank you for filling in, and I appreciate it. Would you still be the sergeant-at-arms? Or do we need to bring someone?
You've got a multi-talented person with you.
Yes, I'm a politician, all right, good, good. All right. Mr. City Attorney, nothing, so nothing, all right. Actions, if any, based on work session or executive session?
Mr. Mayor, before we leave the interim city manager, is he the one that we thank for these nice chairs?
That was my question, yeah.
Yeah, you know, if so, we could maybe keep him interim more often.
Wow, is that all it takes to replace somebody in this town? Nice chairs.
I believe those kudos would go to Public Works Director, Lila Bradley.
Thank you, we thank her for her staff, and gosh, this is, this is nice. This makes a big difference, honestly.
Capable of staying here till midnight now.
Yeah. No. They're not that comfortable. Okay, anyway, so we're still at actions, if any, based on work session or executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion, if I could, ask the city attorney to help me with the wording?
Draft would be direct outside counsel to pursue settlement discussion on matters discussed in executive session, all claims after consultation with city attorney and city manager. Does that sound okay?
I'd so move.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion? I just want to make sure I get my timing right. After discussion is, you present it to us after discussion, or?
No, outside counsel would talk to city manager and I about what the terms would be and then.
Present to us.
No, make discussions with the party and then come to you after. Nothing can be done without you guys.
Right, I just wanted to get my timing right on this. Okay, great. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Well, I'll say aye, just to make sure we got, yeah, that was fine, okay. All right, announcements or comments by city council? Wow, it's only 6:30.
Citizens present again.
I'm sorry?
Citizens present again.
Oh, you're right, I'm so sorry, thank you, blew right past it. Additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Hearing none, thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, now, announcements or comments by city council?
Mr. Mayor, I have just one, just a reminder, tomorrow is a chamber of commerce meeting at Tuesday on 11:45 at Surf Tides. Why, I thought the public and certainly counselors might be interested, again, it's ODOT, and it's more discussion primarily for the public on the repairs of our two bridges, the river and Schooner Creek, just to give the public what's going to happen, and I was just thinking, it's always a good opportunity to pursue our desire for artistic display or change, add-on to those. I won't be able to attend, so I noticed the speaker is different than who presented in front of us, and it might be worthwhile letting them again know that we're interested in maybe some add-ons to the bridge for artistic, you know, conformity or look.
I might add on to your comment, because I was driving through both Salem and, where was I, Lebanon, no, it was just Salem, last night, and how nice it looks to have some lights on the ridges, and just that little bit of something in the aesthetics, you know, pay off. So, thank you. Anything else? No, are we just, let's go down in order here. Councilor Casper.
Yes, I'd like to thank one of the motels along the beachfront, the West Shores. There was a considerable amount of graffiti on the wall at the end of the summer, and they chose to initiate the removal of it, which I was very grateful for, and paint the wall, and it looks fabulous now. So they did that on their own. But I also have noticed an increase of graffiti on private property around town, and I didn't know if we had any ordinances to deal with that, and I was wondering if the staff could look into creating ordinance as to how to eradicate and address it, the ongoing defacing of private property by unlawful application of graffiti. In some cities, there's a 48-hour period where graffiti has to be removed, or there's a team of people who come around to remove it. I don't know how it works for private property. As we've seen, public property, we report it to Public Works or the police, and I was just curious if anyone else was interested in that kind of idea for private property graffiti application.
If I could jump in on your comment, Mr. Avicello, you just sent us something?
I sent you the state law on graffiti, of course, using, there's some statutes on it, and it's a violation offense, but you can also charge someone with criminal mischief, and if you're sentenced for graffiti, judge can order a community service. But it does indicate that that is not a preemption of local government, and the last section talks about no preemption. So if you wanted to have an ordinance like our property maintenance ordinance, which says if people, you know, deface a wall with graffiti, that the private property owner has a certain amount of time to clean it up, we could look into drafting that kind of an ordinance. We currently have a similar ordinance in the property maintenance ordinance. If your windows are broken or whatever, we can order you to correct it, and if you don't, we can cite you. But we don't have anything in the property maintenance ordinance that neatly fits the graffiti issue. It's mostly about safety and sanitary, and it's not about the aesthetics of graffiti. So if you wanted us to either amend the property maintenance ordinance to address graffiti or use like the Portland model, we could do, come back and look at an ordinance that would do that.
Do, I'm sorry, may I jump in on this one? Thank you. Do you have access, or would it be more appropriate for Ron to seek out other cities that might have, you know, a little smaller town kind of thing going on that'd help us out?
I think that it wouldn't be hard to contact the legal Oregon cities and see if they have a model ordinance to address this issue.
Since reinventing that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. Councilor Casper?
Oh, so, can I move to direct staff to create an ordinance to address the eradication and defacing of private property? Seeking a second.
You seconded that? No, I didn't hear you. Okay, motion, second, discussion?
At whose cost to fix it?
Under the property maintenance ordinance, we direct you to do it at your own cost. If your own private property and you don't maintain it, we can direct you to do it. If you don't, we can cite you. But obviously, the maintenance of your property is at your cost.
And then what are the repercussions for not abiding by the citation?
You get a citation to municipal court where you can be fined, and currently, the property maintenance ordinance, I believe, is a Class B violation, $1,000 a day. So that seems to be, it sounds like there's also maybe a remedial model, order someone to repair it, then if you don't correct it, we can enter onto the property and fix it. I'm always cautious in doing that, I don't like to enter onto private property without a warrant. So if we did do that, we'd, of course, there's two issues, due process and, you know, the entry onto someone's property. So we'd want to follow a due process procedure, right to appeal to a hearings officer if they disagree, and also, we'd want to seek a warrant if we entered. So we would exercise a lot of care if we, if we had a remedial option.
And then, so the point of this further ordinance is that, is what exactly, I mean, if your home has graffiti on it, you're probably going to paint it or fix it as soon as you possibly can. So now by, you know, creating an ordinance, now we can cite them for not doing it in a timely fashion. I mean, is there cases that there is an extended amount of time where you see graffiti for a long period of time?
I can tell you one, yeah, there's a sign as you go south on Highway 101 near.
Where the advertisement is?
Where there's, should be an advertisement.
Okay.
And there's a bakery in town that's constantly been graffitied and painted over, and, you know, I don't know how to eradicate it, maybe we have to look into a procedure for some help, I don't know. But I think there is private property around town. There's currently some more on the, the building right down the street from me.
I just, I mean, citing someone for not doing something that, you know, that they probably want to do anyway, and, you know, I understand the billboard, I mean, okay, that's been there for 10 years and it's, always has graffiti on it, I understand that. But, I mean, further than that, I mean, I think people would paint over if they can.
But I think it shows it's of importance to us, enough to do something about it, to create a process to eradicate it.
Eradicate, eradicated in what sense?
Get rid of it, put down guidelines to have it removed?
I would, I would.
I mean, there could be.
I would suggest that, you know, the rationale for this is that it's just property maintenance. There are properties which fall into disrepair, usually those properties are being foreclosed or in some kind of process where you don't have the ordinary impulse of a property owner to, yeah, someone graffiti my house, I'm going to clean that. But if it's a foreclosed property or there's some other issue going on, you might have it neglected, and I think that's what the intention is here.
And to whose, to whose extent? I mean, we have a billboard in town that the owner puts phrases on it all the time, and those aren't liked by everybody, so who's to say what's graffiti and what's not? There's a, there's a for sale sign at a piece of property that has different signs all the time. I know you're not talking about that, but that is another sign that has things painted on it, so how, you know, under what, under whose say-so?
What's graffiti?
Right.
I think graffiti would be someone other than the property owner put, defaced a piece of property, so.
Hey, I'm, I'm, again, devolved into a work session here. I think what I'm gathering is there's an interest in it, but maybe we're just a little bit early with the motion. We've got, instructed the city attorney to bring us something that, maybe from the League of Oregon cities that has worked, and then maybe we could take that and make that motion from that, because I would vote no tonight, but I would vote yes if I had just a little more info.
Well, and, Mr. Mayor, my question of the motion would be, is it one of those exploratory? What I'd like to hear in the motion is that for directing or asking city attorney, city manager to bring back some options?
Right.
Because I wrote down, gee, I kind of like the, just amending something we already have, but I'm also real interested in what other cities, to your point, might already have done. So if it's, you know, now I can't remember the motion, but if it's, if it's broad enough where we would have both amending and what's out there to come back, I'm all for that. Because then would be into a point of good discussion.
Yeah, because I, to just, for me, because as, being a property owner, there's the easy graffiti, there's, hey, there's a big wall, there's a parking lot in front of it, we But what if it's spray painted on some historic building or on stained glasses, very valuable, and we send in the crew with the power washer? And, you know, that's why I would say we want to be careful about going on people's property without a warrant and things like that. I don't want to just send their work crew in and handle it. So, anyway, so, we still have a motion to second. Any further discussion on that?
I'm ready to vote. I don't want to.
If we, can we restate the motion?
Yes, can I restate the motion? I'd like to direct staff to bring forth further information regarding amending property, what was it, was the section, property?
The property maintenance section.
Property maintenance section regarding the issue of graffiti.
Or a new ordinance option.
Or a new ordinance is whatever options are available for further discussion.
Second.
Okay. So, we have an amended motion. And you withdraw your second from the amended motion.
That's okay.
Okay. Nick of time. Anyway, so, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Would counsel be okay interrupting? Hi, you're here to speak to us tonight? We're almost done. We're almost done, so you're under the wire. That's okay. You made it.
I have some statistics for the panel. I think I saw.
If I could just ask, just introduce yourself into the microphone and then whatever you need to do there.
Michelle Branham, elected DA for Lincoln County. I'm going to give you a little bit of a rundown of what my office has been up to in the last year, and I think Councilwoman Anderson has already heard my little spiel, so.
And, Ms. Branham, is there a particular title you care to be addressed by?
Title?
Yeah, I don't know. Would you tell you?
People.
Madam District Attorney or?
That'd be great. Michelle's fine also.
Michelle works, all right. Good enough. Thank you.
And again, I have organized a little bit of a stat, boring stats speech to tell you what the office has been up to and how Lincoln City has fared within Lincoln County statistics, and how the domestic violence statistics measure against last year. And I can tell you that while we haven't had a drastic increase, we certainly haven't had a reduction in cases. And this is, I think some folks have been titling this the DA's Office Annual Report. And so, I think I came up last year to introduce myself and my staff and what we do. I think we have a couple of new council members who may have not met me last year, and so, I'd be happy to give you my information and contact information. And if you do need me before you get that, I am on the Lincoln County website, really quick link. The best way to catch me is by email. I have it with me at all times, and I'm pretty responsive to that. With that, for my annual view and report, I can tell you that in 2016, the DA's Office had 2,587 cases referred to them. Of those, we filed on 1,910 of them. For Lincoln City specifically, 193 felonies were referred and filed, meaning law enforcement has collected enough information, provided to the DA's Office, and we were able to file. We believed we had enough information to file on 193 felonies and 381 misdemeanors. That is a very busy police force. Just miscellaneously, I'm going to talk a little bit about our DUI cases and our domestic violence statistics. By volume, our domestic violence, sorry, our DUI cases are number one historically and have always been. And you all know better than anyone how tourist populations can affect your resources and your economy. We did a little bit of a study to try to figure out how many of our cases and resources are going to tourists as opposed to residents. For DUIs in Lincoln County, we had 322, and between 32% and 40% of those were from folks who didn't live in Lincoln County. So, we had to make treatment available to them. We had to have court appearances for them. We had to make sure that they had probation here in Lincoln County. So, if you're convicted of a crime here specifically for a misdemeanor, you don't necessarily transfer it to another county. So, the county you live in would not be supervising you. So, Lincoln County would have to provide those services. If it's a felony, Lincoln County can ask the other county, whatever your home county is, to accept the supervision, but not for misdemeanors. So, there were 323 arrests for DUI in Lincoln County last year. Seventeen of those were felonies, meaning that the person arrested had two priors or three priors in the last 10 years. There were three manslaughter's. I got some statistics from the state police, and in, and this isn't specifically drugs and alcohol, but there have been nine car fatalities in Lincoln County just until, up until October of 2017. We had eight the entire year last year, so that is definitely up. 285 of those DUIs involve drugs, or sorry, involved alcohol. Seven, we know for sure, involve drugs and alcohol. And the reason there's a distinction is because when law enforcement picks up someone and they determine that their blood alcohol level is at .08 or higher, they don't look any further. They don't have the resources to do that. There's a very real chance that of those 285, a large percentage would have had other controlled substances or legal substances or intoxicating onboard, but for sure, 285 of them involve just alcohol for our prosecution purposes. Twenty-four involve simply drugs, that could be marijuana, oxycodone, heroin. It's a different cocktail, but we were able to file on specifically drugs and not drugs and alcohol in that case, those cases. Forty-seven involve search warrants. This means that our law enforcement officers were taken off the streets because whoever was arrested was refusing to either submit to field sobriety tests or their breathalyzer at the police department, and then law enforcement has to call a judge and say, this is what I see, this is what I have. Do you authorize us to draw blood at the hospital? So, 47 times last year that happened. Thirty-three of the 222, 322 involved a drug recognition call-out. With the legalization of marijuana, you know, it's another challenge for our office. We have folks who may have imbibed recreationally or medicinally with marijuana days ago, and they wouldn't necessarily be under the influence of that at the time of driving. However, there may be a chance that they are. And so, our drug recognitions experts require additional training, reporting requirements. It's a really technical expertise. I don't think there's a lot of them in Lincoln County. We've actually asked for at least more drug recognition expertise training because we are now dealing with folks that are maybe imbibing in alcohol and marijuana or simply marijuana, and that's difficult to detect. From those, 86 involved accidents. This doesn't necessarily mean that they resulted in injury, but 86 times out of the 322 people were injured, or sorry, cars were crashed in 2016. There were two biking under the influences and one boating under the influence in Lincoln County last year.
Biking, meaning the pedal bicycle?
Yes.
Okay.
And I can tell you why.
License.
Well, you know what happens? Someone gets out there, they're under the influence, they're on the public highway, and they're creating a real road hazard for everybody else who's out there. You know, we've had instances where families have been in a vehicle down in Newport, a certain individual who struggled with alcoholism his whole life, was in the middle of the road and swerved, and this car swerved to miss him, and they hit the ditch. He didn't get touched, but then the family's in the ditch. And so, if you're not in a crosswalk and you're on the highway under the influence with a bike, you can get charged. The only difference is the penalty. You are not allowed to get your license suspended if it is a bike DUI because you're not actually out there on the roadways under that license, so. There are two categories which I'd love to mention. We have never had them, except for in 2013, we did have one of these. We have wheelchair DUIs. And the last one, which is my favorite category, is fire engines.
It's what?
It's actually kind of a sad story. There was a person that was legitimately driving a fire engine, and he was responding to a fire. And when law enforcement got there, they smelled his breath and realized he was probably drinking at home before they got the call-out. And he, instead of calling off and said, you know, I was drinking, I shouldn't come out here, jumped in, got his keys, and came out to the scene. So, that's kind of a sad story, but I like when people steal things like that because, you know, where are you going to hide? I don't know what their end game would be, but 2016 did not see any fire engines were driving under the influence. Domestic violence cases, we had 323 involving domestic violence, and this is intimate partner violence on one another. And for those, we have separated them out in specific crime categories, assaults, restraining orders, stalking complaints, menacing counts. And so, 2015, there were 311. 2016, we had 323. I'm never one to spew stats in any kind of meaningful way because you can never tell. Maybe somebody's, you know, feeling very emboldened by a PR campaign, and, you know, we have more reports, not because we have more violence, just simply people feel more comfortable calling in. Or for some reason, people maybe didn't call in, but, you know, violence is still there. So, all I know is what I filed on, I can't tell you the meaning behind those. So, in 2016, there were 86 domestic violence misdemeanors, meaning someone was injured and they were in an intimate partner situation. There were 56 felony assaults for domestic violence, and typically, that will mean that if you've had a prior assault on the same victim, two prior domestic violence assaults, or this was an assault witnessed by a minor child of either the victim or the defendant. If that happens, it's elevated to a felony, and there were 53 in Lincoln County last year. For domestic violence menacing, there were 57, meaning threats of serious physical injury or death. And you have in those menacing cases, this is not somebody just calling you up on the phone, you have to be able to actually carry through with your threat. That's the only way you could be guilty of those counts. For harassments, this means that you're not injured, but you're offensively touched. There were 127 filings for assaults that were either A or B felonies, meaning you have injured someone with a serious physical injury resulting, or you used a weapon in the assault. There were 26. For domestic violence strangulation, there were 26 misdemeanors, sorry, 21 misdemeanors, and four felony strangulations. Fifty-three of those cases were fueled by alcohol, six were fueled by drugs, 17 involved weapons, and three were involving a sexual assault. There were 39 restraining order petitions received in 2016, and those petitions were violated 71 times. And that doesn't necessarily mean that those specific ones were violated. This could mean we get folks coming here on vacation a lot, and then we find out later on, the two of them have a no contact order provision, they've got a restraining order in place. Law enforcement has to do the research, but they figure out that these folks should not be having contact, and we file either here or in the jurisdiction where they were coming from, and we have jurisdiction for both. Of those, we had six stalking charges that we were able to file. Of the 323, Lincoln City accounted for 64 of the arrests and cases that were filed in my county, or in my office.
Did you say that again? I missed that.
Sure. Lincoln City PD resulted in 64 of those cases. That doesn't mean that there were 64 domestic violence arrests. What that means is that 64 cases were filed and went through the system. We get reviews all the time with domestic violence. A review is a case where law enforcement's done their investigation, they have not made an arrest, and they're asking, can we prove something? And so, for sure, there were 64 cases that were filed resulting with jurisdiction here in Lincoln City. There were 165 guilty pleas, 87 were dismissed. And when I say dismissed, that means that 87 of those cases probably entered into our diversion programs. We have, and this is a speech for another time, but we have specialty courts in Lincoln County, and specifically a domestic violence specialty court that's run by Judge Bachart, and she allows folks that have made these kinds of decisions and had these kinds of experiences in their family, gives them an opportunity to earn their way out of it. And so, what will look like on their criminal history, it'll be case dismissed, but in fact, they have committed a year of treatment and check-ins with the judges and sobriety and no contact orders with the person they've assaulted. Following that year, they can earn a dismissal, and so, we're not filing on 323 and dismissing 87. What we're doing is getting as many people through that program as we possibly can. It's a high number, and I'd like to explain it if I can. So, that's the information on domestic violence. Final stats for the evening are just general cases. As I mentioned, there were more than 2,500 cases filed in Lincoln County. Twenty-two involved adult-on-adult sex crimes. Seven involved animal abuse. Five involved arson. There were 171 for assaults of non-domestic nature. Thirty-four child neglect or endangerment. Sixty physical abuse, including Carley's Law, if you know what that is. It's a case where if somebody is, a child is injured and we know about it, maybe doctors have reported it, emergency rooms, schoolteachers, law enforcement, they go through these protocols, and there were 60 of those that came through our office. Seventy-four child sex abuse cases. Twenty-five child criminal support, meaning we supervise hundreds of criminal or child support cases. Twenty-five of these cases resulted in someone not paying to the point where they were so non-responsive to the attempts from the office to have even portions of their obligation paid. So, we had to file on 25 cases last year. Some could have involved the same people because of a repeated non-payment, but typically, it's spread out, and probably close to 20 people would have been filed on last year. 106 dependency or DHS cases were filed. 113 nuisance disorderly type crimes have been filed. 322 DUIs, 323 domestic violence cases, 25 elder abuse cases, and this could be financial or physical abuse. Twenty-two involving environmental crimes or timber crimes. Seven fatal crashes, accidents. That's one off then from, I got the information from the state police, so maybe it didn't get calculated in the right year. I have 40 fish and wildlife cases filed, and that number's kind of misleading because for fish and wildlife cases, they normally come in as violations. These are crimes, and so, if you don't know the difference between those, there are some that are just someone, you know, inadvertently brought in a fin clip, or, you know, somebody just, you know, left licenses at home, whatever those are, they'll come in as just tickets. Forty of these cases last year, we decided are to the level of criminal, meaning, you know, somebody's illegally fishing, somebody's not following the rules, and 40 times last year, Lincoln County filed on those. There were 17 fugitive complaints. 409 government-type filings, meaning driving while suspended, failing to register as a sex offender, attempted unlawful purchase of firearms, and failing to appear to the court systems. There was one murder in Lincoln County in 2016. There was one marine crime, and I can't even think of what that might be. But 812 property crimes, including burglaries, robberies, frauds, identity thefts, trespassing, 27 stalking crimes, and then 271 street drugs, delivery of controlled substances, or theft of prescription medication. Those are the stats that I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'm sorry to keep you late.
You are not. We're happy to be skating out here before 10 o'clock. We're good to go. Any questions?
Hi, thank you for your information.
Sure.
I just have a question, and if you can, as far as the stalking or the harassment, I've been told, and, you know, it's only in person or telephonically. Is there a movement to do web internet-based or stuff like that? Is there any kind of in-the-works of that happening? Because I know that that happens a lot, and there's nothing we can do because it's not a text, and it's not a phone call, and it's not in person, but I know that it happens a lot. So, is that something?
It is something, and I can tell you, when we get to that level... And I can tell you, when we get to that level, typically, we have judges involved. And our judges will tell them, "Do you know what this means? This means no third-party contact. This means no social media contact. This means..." And they incorporate that. So while it's not an additional crime, if someone gets a stalking order, they have a hearing, and that's all explained to them. And the judges will say, "We interpret your contact", meaning if you're contacting them on Facebook, we consider that contact.
Once the stalking has been established?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. The second thing is, I heard twenty-two sex crimes and seventy-four child sex abuse. Is that correct? There was three times as many child sex abuse than adult?
Yes.
That's horrible.
It's horrible.
I mean, that's horrible. And, you know, I know in our budget, this year, we had put money aside for children, you know, who need money for, you know, attorney's fees or rehabilitation or stuff like that. But I mean, the $10,000 that we set aside doesn't at all compare to that. And then when you have three times as many than adult sex abuse crimes, then, you know, that's, I don't know what even what to do. I mean, I'm sick.
And these are crimes, typically, by the time they get on my caseload, they're tough to prove. You know, we've got to find a placement for a child typically. And then they need to be interviewed at the Children's Advocacy Center. I mean, there's so many things that, you know, I don't want to talk about open cases. But by the time we get to this point where they're actually being filed on, and we go in there and we have to prove this, I mean, this does, not that it's going to make you feel any better, but this does involve everybody up to eighteen. You know, we get a mushroom of cases when kids are teenagers and, you know, they have intimate relations with maybe somebody who's older than eighteen, those kinds of things. It's a staggering number still. And I can't explain it, but I can tell you, we have, it's called an NDT, Multidisciplinary Task Force. And it used to meet every other week. And they would talk about cases with DHS would be involved, the school districts were involved, law enforcement was there, all of the detectives, the DA's office. We've had so many cases, we have to meet weekly. And the nice thing about that is all of law enforcement, the DA's office, DHS, we're so committed to this that, you know, maybe it's because we're doing a better job handling these cases, if people feel more comfortable coming forward. Maybe that's the explanation. But I can tell you, reporting requirements have been censured down. We're doing a lot of really good education on, "Teacher, you've seen this, you've heard this. This person is acting inappropriately." They have to report that. So again, I'm not going to interpret stats for you. I don't know how to explain them. Someone smarter than me may be able to do that. But I can tell you, when these cases come in, there is a village working on them right now.
Probably one of our detectives spends ninety percent of his time... I'm sorry. I've got one detective who spends about ninety percent of his time working nothing but child abuse cases.
It's true. You can't give him on anything else.
If I could ask a question on that? Is that an individual, each one of us is an individual person? Or is it, could be one person with several crimes? Is it multiple counts for one person? Or is it single count per incident? You know what I'm asking?
I do, and I...
Could it be one person accounting for ten of those?
It could be. It's one person, one case. When I'm reporting this, this is somebody that has this case. But, you know, if they had two victims, that wouldn't be accounted for. It would actually increase the number.
Okay. Because we saw, you know, someone in our public schools who was discharged and convicted. That adds a lot to the number.
Sure does.
One person, yeah.
Ooh, mine's a little easier to hear. I'm just curious, how do we, how do we compare to other counties on the coast?
I haven't done that. In fact, I'm going to take a note now because I think that was the question last year. And I didn't, I meant to do research to follow up on that, and I didn't. I'll have those for you then.
Thank you.
Anyone down this end?
Mr. Mayor? Michelle, thanks. And yes, I've heard this twice, but, you know, as the council knows, I'm a slow reader and listener, so it always helps to hear you a couple of times. Michelle, could you share with me? I heard twenty-five, roughly twenty-five hundred filed on. But I, I'm assuming, and I'm not even going to ask the chief, but the question kind of goes, what do they think of you? Because filed on tells me that you had enough, your office had enough information to take on a case. What I don't know is how many went away. What, how, are you thought well of by the police because you're willing to take on cases first and foremost? So I'm trying to get a hedge, you know, twenty-five hundred. But if five thousand came to you and you only took half of them, I don't know if that's good or bad. I don't hear them calling you the hanging DA, so you, you know...
What do you think, Chief?
I think Michelle and her office does an outstanding job with the staff that she has. So not every case is going to get filed on. There's deficiencies in some of those cases. And then there's a staffing issue that she has to deal with too, and we recognize that.
So that would, let me stay with that because that's my second question. How your office gets funded by county taxes. But we, like a lot of the coast, enjoys the benefit of a lot of guests who seem to use our systems. And I would assume your office. So we're paying for their prosecution. Or are your court fees and stuff recovering? Are we...
I don't see anything from the courts. So, and Lincoln County General Fund pays for eighty percent of my staff. And so when we have a victim coming in from Portland, I had victims last week from Australia, you know, those, you know, if I have to buy plane tickets from Australia, that comes from Lincoln County General Funds.
So my question is hypothetical, and we don't have a state representative with us today. But, you know, shouldn't we be thinking of some way to get your office more money from transit room tax, for example? An allocation? I mean, we'd hate to give up anything on you.
And I don't know who, if anyone is looking at this. And what we have been doing, specifically me, I've been the DA for three years. I'm up for reelection in another year. And when I came on board, I had been a prosecutor for about a decade, a little more than a decade. And so I saw the case end of it, and I didn't see the administration end of it at all. And so getting my feet under me, I kind of came in and I asked for what I thought I needed, specifically victims' advocates from the General Fund. And the commissioners have been very receptive to the needs. I mean, they were coming out of a recession themselves, and so they were trying to be responsible with that. I don't know of any county DA's office that receives funding other than General Fund. That's sort of just kind of a cookie-cutter approach. We have written for and received grants in the past. Drug Court would cover an entire DA. We have had domestic violence grants in the past that covers additional DAs. Those things are important, but my goals have been longevity. I am and have seen, you know, great programs in place. We lose the grant, and then all of those, you know, inroads and progress, you know, falls apart. While it's helpful at the time, I don't want to be shoveling sand anymore. I'm really trying to build something. So it's probably not as, going as quickly as some people would like to see, but I am incrementally trying to move it up. As the chief mentioned, I, you know, we have ten attorneys in my office. You know, the courts call us the biggest firm in the county. But, you know, do the math, you know, when you've got this, I've got caseloads of people with four hundred cases, you know, and we are juggling in there. But I'm getting the right kind of prosecutors making the right kinds of decisions. And again, I've only been doing this three years, three and a half years, but I feel like we're heading in the right direction. Once I get my feet under me a little bit and I know what the statistics means, what I can do to reduce crime if possible here, and maybe have folks that are out of county shoulder more of the burden instead of having it just in county. All of those things up for play. I have not had time to even look at those yet.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I listen to you...
Oh, you had the talk too. I remember, yes.
I've heard you give a presentation at Quanis and also at Chamber. And I appreciate your presentation every time. It hasn't been repetitive. It's been very interesting. Thank you.
And whenever anyone's interested in my, I do have a little more time, I'll talk about the specialty courts because I'm really committed to those. I think they take our caseload and reduce them while giving a chance to have somebody make some real positive changes.
Yeah, I'd love for the council to hear about the specialty courts.
My next one.
So someone gets a ticket?
Yes.
And it goes to trial? What percentage makes it to trial from a ticket issued?
Less than five.
Less than five percent?
Hi, welcome. Thank you for coming. Appreciate that so much. One's an odd question, maybe you can't answer, something about the nine fatalities, the auto accidents.
This year.
Yeah. Are we seeing that clumped, clustered anywhere in particular?
No.
No, okay.
And I got that from the state police. So they're the ones on the major corridors. And I think there was actually a few here in town that... Did you call state police out for the one over by Devil's Lake? They would have included that in the statistics. But, you know, they do a lot of technical support for all of the municipalities. And so I can tell you, once the offending driver is the deceased driver, law enforcement investment sort of reduces quite a bit because you're not going to prosecute someone who just passed away. You know, they do their due diligence. But if someone is a survivor and they've crossed the center line and caused two people to die, then, you know, they shut the highway down and a lot of resources go into it. I'm just trying to think, most of those would have been tourists. And the person on Toledo that passed away was a Lincoln County resident. Yeah, one was a local. But everyone else, all those other fatalities, the offending driver, they were not locals.
Okay, I ask because we've had discussions about approaching ODOT for speed reduction. And it's that and the other thing. And I just kind of try to gather information that says, "Look, we've got an area that's dangerous, and here's why. What can we do to address these things?" So that's fine.
You know who, if somebody's interested in that statistic, you know, I've got a hundred and twenty, what was it? The DUI stats have the crash reports on them. And I can tell you that we would be able to locate in Lincoln City where the majority of those crashes, obviously, one-on-one would be covered in that. But just because they're not fatals doesn't mean that it's not a dangerous location for them. So involving crashes.
Michelle, if I can have you pull the mic just a little bit closer?
Yeah. Eighty-six of our DUIs in 2016 involved crashes. So we could probably help mine that information once you are ready to present that to ODOT. I don't know if it'll support your position or not, but...
Yeah, I don't know either. Just thinking ahead.
Yeah. That would be, we would have that information if you need it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Well, thank you so much, and sorry for the confusion on the start time.
I'm sure it was my confusion.
I doubt it. You're pretty busy.
We had an office training today that we've all been distracted with, so...
You have to drive all the way back to Salem now?
No.
Oh, no, you got it Salem.
Lincoln County, yeah.
County.
And home. Council, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we were still with Counselor Casper. You are done. After a walkie.
I am attending the chamber lunch tomorrow that Dick was talking about. So I will ask about changes to our bridges, I guess.
Could you give that time again?
Eleven forty-five. And tomorrow's lunch is at Surf Tides. Which is underneath Mist Restaurant is where the meetings are held. Mike?
I'm sorry, I know you did that, but people have asked me, "Do they have to pay for lunch to come to these things?"
No.
Right, so the public can just come attend and listen to something right from there?
Right.
Without paying?
If you don't want to eat lunch, you don't have to pay. You can always buy razzle tickets. The question I had tonight is about our cellphone reception in town. And we have spots in town that some people's cellphones kind of die. What can we do about that? I know it's up to the companies to build the towers, and there are towers. I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do to help fill in the gaps. Maybe that's a question for planning. Maybe it's bigger than that. I don't know.
I guess my, if I might, the question I have is, well, I need Ron here. Not that you're not adequate. But I guess the question I have, one of those at Public Works would have some information about it because they'd have to get an approval from us to build towers.
Which would be from the planning department.
Planning. I'm just wondering, maybe they could be, have some input on that. I agree, I know my service provider, not so good. But I hear other people say, "Oh, I got great coverage."
Yeah. And then there's other people who come to town and complain that they don't have any coverage.
Well, there's a dialing back when the usage goes up, so...
And that's not good either.
No. Okay, or throttling back, as they call it.
I will follow up with Ron, I guess.
Nothing tonight? Nothing tonight? Mr. Ward?
Nope.
All right. Oh, gosh, I have nothing either, other than, oh, I do get to brag. I'm another grandfather for the third time. We welcome my son Aaron's baby boy into the world after a thirty-hour labor. Boy, at 3:00 AM, that little guy decided to show up, so we welcome him to this world. With that, may God bless you all. May God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned.
Yeah, before 3:30.